Okay. There's a little administrative work going on, but we're going to convene this meeting of Calbright College. And we're going to do our best to get Wi-Fi accessibility in the room. If not, I'll be working on my phone to figure out where we are in the agenda. We're going to start with the roll call.
Lautecard Aguinaldo.
Here.
Darius Anderson.
Here.
Jeffrey Baum. Felicia Escobar Carrillo.
Here.
Amy Costa.
Here.
Colm Fitzgerald.
Here.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Kevin Hall. Julina Grande.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Here.
Kim Parago.
Here.
Bill Rawlings.
Here.
Valerie Lynn Shaw.
Here.
Alma Salazar.
Present.
Blas Villalobos.
Here.
Alexis Saragosa.
Here.
Okay, great. Now we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. We like to call on our new board members. So, Member Salazar, could you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next up is the President's Report, and I am pleased to report that I have nothing to report. And we will turn it over to the CEO's report.
Thank you, and good afternoon. I just wanted to make a brief announcement that we are on track in terms of our own timeline and timetable for beginning to register learners on October 1. As you all know, you've been part of approving our curricula. We have more stuff for you to do today to make sure that the learners are prepared to receive all of their services and content. But we are on track, and we are starting to share information with many different folks. So we've seen about 600 learners, potential learners, ask for more information, and we're starting to communicate with them and share and get them prepared for October 1. That's my report today.
Okay. And with that, we are going to move into closed session. And my best guess is that we'll be back around 1 o'clock. Could be even a little later than that, but probably not sooner than 1 o'clock. Okay, the Board of Trustees is back in session. We are going to make one change to the agenda. We are going to, after the consent agenda and the executive hire item 4.1, we're going to move up item 4.6 to be heard before items 4.2, 3, 4, and 5. So with that... Yeah, we still have, we've lost a few members from the time of the original roll call, but we still have a quorum of the board. So, the first thing we need to do is the consent agenda, or no, the report out on the closed session. I apologize to those of you who were waiting. The closed session took a little while, but we considered the matters that were listed in the agenda and had a discussion of those. And now, we're going to move on to the consent, oh, I'm sorry, the consent agenda. And we have Sakari to announce that for us.
Hello. Good afternoon, CEO Hiles, Board President Epstein, and Vice President Haynes, and members of the board. My name is Sakari Morrison. I'm the SVP of Calbright College, SVP of External Affairs for Calbright College. I'm presenting the July 15 Board of Trustee Minutes for review and approval by the board.
Okay, the, let me explain a little bit more. There were some errors to the prior Board of Trustee Meeting Minutes, and they are also on this consent agenda.
So there's 3.1 and 3.2. The 3.1 will be for the Board of Trustee Minutes for review and approval. The 3.2 is, are the board meeting minutes from January 2019 to June 2019. And those represent two changes. The first was requested by the board, and that we added detailed information on who motion seconded, abstained, and who was not present. And the second, we took the opportunity to update each set of minutes to cite the reason for our closed sessions. And while this information was available and recorded, this extra step enables us to be even more transparent with our public.
Okay, and then the third item is a public vote on the non-executive hires that are in the packet. So with that, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve.
For Rawlings.
Second.
Second by Member Parago. Please call the roll.
Lautecard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson. Felicia Escobar Carrillo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Julina Grande.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Parago.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Lynn Shaw. Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Alexis Saragosa.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Moving on now to the public vote on the executive hire. CEO, do you want to do this, or do you want... Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Was it, were you overlooked in the roll call? You don't have a vote. I mean, you pretty it up a lot, but you don't get to vote. Okay. Ms. Van.
Hello. Good afternoon, President Hiles, Board President Tom Epstein, Vice President Haynes, and board members. I'm here today to request your vote on our executive hire that you have discussed in the closed session, and to take any more questions that there may be at this time.
Before we go forward, I need to announce that the contract is for Mandy Eckersley to serve as the Senior Vice President of Learner Success. The contract provides for a three-year term and a base salary of $240,000 provided annually. The contract provides for membership in CalPERS and the associated employees contribute, at the employee, at the associated employer contribution rate so set by statute. The contract also provides for other benefits, vacation and sick leave that is currently offered to other executive employees. And we will now, I'm announcing that we will take public comments for this agenda item. Are there any public comments? There are. This is item... No, no, it's 4.1.
4.1.
Not this item. Okay. So no one has submitted a public, is there anyone in the public who wants to comment on this item? Okay. Hearing none. The governing board of the California Online Community College District will now vote on the contract for the Senior Vice President of Learner Success. Under California law, as the board president, I am obligated to orally announce, well, I've already done this, the monetary provisions of the contract and the values are the same. And the board will now vote on the contract. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Rawlings and Aguinaldo have moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Lautecard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson. Felicia Carrillo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
No.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Julina Grande.
Abstain.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Parago. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Lynn Shaw. Alma Salazar.
Abstain.
Alexis Saragosa.
Aye.
I believe we need nine votes to approve that motion, and it appears to me we do not have nine votes.
Seven yes votes.
Seven yes votes. The motion does not carry. Okay. Moving on now, as I indicated, we're going to go to item 4.6, the Auxiliary Foundation Administrative Procedures Service Agreement and Board Oversight.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Joanna Powell, and I'm an attorney from Fagan Friedman &amp; Full Frost. And I'm here to talk about and present the next steps for the establishment of the Auxiliary Foundation. As I'm sure everybody recalls, or at least those on the executive committee, during last month's executive committee meeting, the executive committee voted to move forward with an auxiliary foundation. And so today, I'm presenting about two items to be submitted to the chancellor for his approval. So the request is for a vote to approve these items to move forward to the chancellor. And those two items are the Administrative Procedure 3600 and a proposed master contract with the foundation. And I think you have accessed all of those documents. They're fairly generic. They're based on models from other community college districts, and they basically track the requirements of the CCR, of 5CCR, 59257. The other item for approval is delegation to the executive committee of oversight over the foundation. And just to put this a little bit in context, the chancellor, after submitting the AP and the master contract to him, he has 60 days to review and decide whether to approve those items. And if he does approve them, the next step would be for the board to hold a public hearing regarding the establishment of the foundation. And then at that point, there would actually be a vote on whether to establish the foundation. So it's kind of a long process, and the ask right now is not to take that final step, it's to approve these materials for submission to the chancellor.
President Hiles, since we have quite a few new members who haven't had a chance to hear about this foundation before, I would appreciate it if you could provide some context and background.
Absolutely. We, I believe we are in need of an auxiliary foundation in order to provide the wraparound services and more of the social services, frankly, that I believe our folks, our learners need once they're placed onto the job. And I believe that a lot of those services we'd like to provide to our learners go outside of the expectations of what Calbright College would provide and what the taxpayer dollars were allotted for, for the purpose of running the college. A little bit of background information is 96 out of the 115 or other 114 community colleges have established foundations. Calbright uniquely seeks to be self-sustaining in 12, in seven years, and a foundation is critical to us achieving that goal. Foundations are a vehicle for philanthropy to provide an important amount of supports regarding things like financial literacy training and health and other wellness supports for our learners. The establishment of the foundation would be an institution that would help raise outside philanthropic dollars to support these ancillary services that we'd like to provide. As an example, UC Berkeley has foundations specializing in many different areas of athletics, alumni support, system achievement. It's just common for many and most higher ed institutions to have foundations that provide other supports. When I was a student at UC Berkeley, there was an Emerging Leaders Award, for example, that helped me stay in school, and these were philanthropic dollars that supported my work as a student. Foundations maintain general welfare of college, are responsible for providing aid for general welfare of our college operations through social, charitable, religious, and educational activities, as many organizations prefer donating to a foundation rather than to a state or local government authority directly. So I've been in numerous conversations with private foundations and others who are actually looking to make grants to us. In fact, I've had verbal conversations that would actually fulfill our first year's goal of raising several million dollars for these ancillary supports. Since the board approved an auxiliary, the notion of an auxiliary foundation in August, we've been focused on doing the right preparation work to submit to the chancellor's office for his review and approval. As a public institution, it's important to Calbright that we not be subject to undue external influences that limit what we can provide to our learners. These are a non-traditional population, folks who are not enrolling in traditional educational environments, but enrolling into our programs to get better living wage jobs with benefits. And sometimes they need other kinds of non-traditional supports that just may go outside and above and beyond what is expected of a college.
Okay. With that, any board comments? Member Perry.
I agree with you and unequivocally support the mission of the foundation being to have the flexibility to support the unique needs of our population. So above and beyond employing them, there's a whole bunch of ancillary services that are really important to ensure the continued success of our students. Having said that, and I do support in the long-term setting up a foundation because I think it is essential to the success of the college. Having looked at and reviewed the vast number of things that are on your plate and the plate of the staff for this initial year, some of which are legislatively mandated, some of which are enrollment-based, it is a daunting list of accomplishments. So my recommendation would be to postpone setting up the foundation since you're able to avail yourself of the services of the Foundation for Community Colleges, which has a longstanding reputation, done really good work in this, and has the ability, I think, because they have really good longstanding relationships with a number of corporations, one of whom actually supported the setup of, helped set up the online community college. I think utilizing their services in the short term, it takes the work of setting up a foundation off the plate and enables you to focus on the other priorities, and it also creates greater efficiencies that enable you to focus on the other, the other things you need to focus on. So my send, again, it would be, I certainly don't oppose setting up a foundation. I support it fully because it rounds out the mission, but I would strongly recommend that we postpone it for six months to a year to free everyone up to work on the other issues at hand.
Member Costa.
I just want to align myself with Ms. Perry's comments. I agree with that. And I also think that after the beta cohort is complete, we'll probably have better information about what those wraparound services might be, and we'll be able to build the structure of the auxiliary foundation in a more thoughtful manner based on that data.
President Hiles.
I fully appreciate, and I appreciate the support of even sequencing out a lot of the work that is done. I wouldn't actually be recommending this now if I didn't think we were having more operational hurdles by working through the existing foundation. And while I fully understand, and it sounds great to wait six or nine months or a year, I do worry that if we don't have visibility into the complete experience for our learners, that that is truncated in some way, I worry that we're not going to be able to deliver the outcomes that we're intending. But we, I just need to acknowledge, because I have a lot of my team members here who struggle every day on many operational items because we are working through the other foundation. So I just want to acknowledge that as one of the reasons why I've been pushing this so aggressively.
trustee Carrillo.
Can I ask just a clarification about the process? So as I understand it, this is not a vote on whether it should be a foundation, but to basically start the public process to create one. Can you, you mentioned that it's a lengthy process, but can you just explain a little bit more about, you know, like the common period? I just want to better understand, like if we were to, if we were to vote yes to move forward today, how long that process would play out? Would it play out over another six to nine months? Or, I have no idea.
Yeah, I can walk you through that. And I would also point out, the vote at the executive committee meeting last month was to move forward with establishing the auxiliary foundation. So at this point, the vote is about whether or not to approve the proposed materials, which is the AP 3600 and the master contract for submission to the chancellor. So we're doing that now. This is September. You know, if we decide to move, if you all decide to move forward, we would submit the materials just immediately after the meeting. And he has 60 days to approve them, so that would take probably through October and November. And then, you know, perhaps in the November or the December, board meeting would be when the public hearing takes place regarding the establishment of the foundation, and that again is when the board would actually vote to approve it. The steps after that relate to actually getting the foundation up and running. So the first step after the approval would be for the board to select the foundation's founding board members, which would perhaps be around three or five, three to five founding board members. And then those founding board members of the foundation would draft the foundation's Articles of Incorporation, submit those to the California Secretary of State and the chancellor. And so I'm, you know, I think on probably the tightest timeline, I could imagine that would be happening in December or early next year. And then the California Secretary of State would issue a corporate charter that I, it's very hard to predict how long that would take, but perhaps sometime in spring 2020. And then the foundation board would draft its bylaws, and at that point, it would actually exist.
Vice President Haynes.
So I, so just for clarification, the board doesn't meet every month.
Right.
So there are gaps there. It would be helpful to have a better idea of, and I realize that you're not, you can't wave a wand as to the timeframe. The, what is on us to consider is the waiting of six months to a year. The question becomes, do we wait to start the process six months to a year versus will it, do we have some, do we have some flexibility, some space in there to continue to consider if we're moving too quickly? Does the, does the possibility of being able to stop the process because we need more time, is that precluded? Or can we do that at any time along the way? Or is there a place, once we submit something, that that ball has already started rolling and you can't stop it?
I don't think so. I think that one, if the chancellor approved and sent, you know, stamped with his approval, then the board could decide not to actually hold the public hearing at that point and not to actually take the vote on the establishment. I also think the board could decide to do both of those things, and the foundation, you know, could technically exist without necessarily starting to do things. So I think there's a few different stages where it could be slowed down.
So just, just a follow-up. So I'm, I'm torn because I understand the need to really think and walk through this. But I also believe that there is, there is a need for a foundation. A foundation that, because there is interest out in, out in, even just not in California, but there is, there's money. And I know how, I serve on the Los Rios Foundation and do so willingly. There's a real challenge to be able to fund foundations, and especially for the work that this foundation's dollars would be going toward. In many cases, many of the foundations, it's been capital outlay. We've, we've come to the, we've now come to the conclusion as a system that we really need to be funding student support, especially for those students who are most challenged with completing their aspirational goals. So I don't want to leave, you really can't, I don't want to leave one dime on the table. I want to strike while the iron is hot. And so I would prefer, my preference is to move, to move forward, to ensure that we're not slowing down, at least the process of stepping through some of the elements that we need to do. We can always hold, this is a board that is not afraid to set its positions and direct our president and staff to do what it needs to do. So that's my observation.
Member Grande.
I just had a follow-up question regarding the timeline. In the event that this particular item, as presented on the agenda today, is not approved, what happens next?
Well, the foundation, these, the AP and the master contract would need to be approved before they could be submitted to the chancellor, before he could approve, before the board could approve. So this is kind of one step in a long chain of things that need to happen for the foundation to be approved. So if this, if the board decided not to move forward, I guess it would be up to staff to decide whether to bring it back at a later time. But definitely none of those other steps would happen.
One of, may I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
One of the things that you mentioned is that the establishment of the foundation was already approved at the executive committee meeting that met in August?
If I said that, that wasn't totally accurate. So what was discussed at that meeting was deciding whether to move forward with an auxiliary versus an independent. And I think the language, I don't have that, those minutes in front of me, but I think it was whether to move forward. So it was a bit phrased a bit vaguely, but it wasn't approval of the establishment because, again, that doesn't happen until all of these other steps and the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
trustee Rawlings.
Thank you for the information. I'm also in favor of moving forward right now, and there's a couple of reasons for it. One is, based on the discussion we've had over the past couple of months, and giving authorization to explore moving forward with an auxiliary rather than independent, I'm much more comfortable with the auxiliary foundation than the independent. But the other thing is, like I'm sure some other folks here at the table have done, is I've founded some nonprofits and some foundations before, and I know that the initial startup of it is a lot of hurry up and wait, and then hurry up and wait. And you go through this period of getting legal, getting some of the process in place, getting the approvals, having the discussion, getting the approvals, and then you're waiting usually for some other agency or state body to review it. And it's when all that's done and the status is, got the final approval, then the busy work actually begins. And that really is going to be a handful of months down the road. And so knowing that as we're doing this first couple of cohorts probably, we're going to have a lot of waiting that we're going to be doing for the foundation in that amount of time, I'm okay with moving forward. It's really just a matter of when we get the final approval, what kind of personnel resources will it take to really start getting that outreach and get the money coming in? And a lot of the busier work happening later, that's really where I'd be more conscious of the amount of time that we're going to be spending doing this.
trustee Aguinaldo.
Just a quick comment. I'm also in favor of moving forward on this agenda item, so long as we put some material checkpoints in place that anticipate some milestones so that... checkpoints in place that anticipate some milestones, so that we can do as a member cost us out and incorporate the information that we get from the beta cohort and possibly other data sources.
Go ahead.
On that point, we're literally looking at the administrative procedures. It's an item 3600 that just lays out the policies essentially for running the foundation, which actually wouldn't be informed by the specifics of what we're learning from the beta cohort. In fact, one of the reasons for raising philanthropic dollars is so that we can continue to do R and D, and we can share with the field what works and doesn't work with various populations. It's really a great application of philanthropic dollars, but not college-running dollars. And so it's, you actually, what we're looking at is the language to submit to the chancellor's office to have approval to create the foundation. As another point of just data, I have soft circled and have verbal commitments for roughly $5 million to start the foundation with, organizations waiting to make those grants. So we do have startup funds available, and I have corporate foundations that would like to also make grants as they're partnering with us as employers. So I understand the hesitation and that this is a lot moving forward. I just am trying to figure out the most efficient way to get all of the work done. There's a lot of strategy and research and development that we really have committed, sharing with the industry at large about what works with hard-to-serve populations to get them better jobs. I'm trying to advance that work.
I'd like to move that the item be deferred by six months.
We're still taking comments from board members before we have a motion. Member, Justy Salazar.
I think I'm just struggling a little bit with the disjointedness because I feel like I'm hearing two messages, and I just want to clarify for myself. So there seems to be a sense of urgency and kind of the need to strike where, while the iron is hot, and there's an immediate potential for influx of resources, and, which is now. And try and understand what is that infrastructure in place to facilitate the acceptance of those resources? And then I'm hearing parallel to that, we want to get the ball rolling on a long-term foundation, auxiliary foundation infrastructure that is probably several months out to get mobilizing. And I guess I'm just hearing two parallel issues, and I'm having difficulty reconciling the two because while they build on one another, they're each unique and require an explicit set of strategies. So can you help me unpack a little bit more and help me reconcile the two? Because I, one isn't necessarily adding up to the other.
Okay. So maybe the inferential leap that I'm taking is that we've struggled to get accounting reports and to understand how much money that's been raised from philanthropic dollars we have to spend. We have a lot of operational challenges paying invoices and doing certain things through the existing foundation. That is a vehicle where we could receive philanthropic dollars today, but I am trying to remove some of those barriers and build systems that I believe will support most effectively and efficiently our college. And one of those being having an auxiliary foundation that would go towards the, exclusively towards the R and D and the operations of supporting our learners. I'm sorry. And the one other thing is that certain organizations that are interested in making grants to us would like it to go directly to our foundation, not to the college or to a public entity. Or...
You mean not to the community college?
Not to the college directly.
No, the college. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, those are two different points, but definitely not to the college directly, but also that they would feel just more confident that if it was exclusively designed for services, I understand the fiscal agency services, but it's...
Because they're requesting an identified 501(c)(3) or what's the stipulation around the funder's request?
Well, so the one issue is that they need to give to, yes, a philanthropic organization another foundation as opposed to a public entity itself. And that, so that's a preference. There, I think, are understandings that different types of fiscal agencies, you are beholden to their operations in order to do the work. And I think that that's the other issue.
Justy Correa.
Yeah, I kind of had some questions as well about the dollars that have already been raised and how they're being put to use. And, you know, foundations have annual budgets, so if you're getting commitments now, you won't have a foundation set up till next fiscal year. So, I mean, it sounds like, I'm just wondering how that is, how that will work because...
All of the philanthropic dollars that have been raised historically to help stand up the college have been spent.
Okay.
So we're actually working from zero now.
Okay.
And trying to figure out the best way, most, I think, operationally efficient, that's what I'm trying to figure out, way to raise new dollars and to then utilize them.
Justy Fitzgerald.
So I have a question for you, ma'am. So it sounds like no matter what, if this foundation is kind of approved to start beginning, it's definitely not going to be ready by the first cohort. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So by which cohort would it be ready by an estimate?
We, after this first cohort, we won't actually have cohorts anymore because we will have competency-based things where people can sign up every single day. So this is really just me thinking about what are all the things we need to provide that we're trying to deliver around research and development and then wrap around services? And what's the best vehicle or system for standing up to make sure that that happens? And I'm looking six years, six months out to think about and anticipate, what systems do we have to start investing and building today to have available six months, nine months out?
I guess I'm just trying to think of the possible benefits of approving it now. And I see here, the auxiliary organization can be used to fund a student organization. And I know that's something that should be explored with CalBright. So that may be a possible benefit of getting this process done. Just trying to look at it.
Yeah, we talk about it as alumni services. So we want people to feel part of the alumni and the community of CalBright even once they're on the job. And so a lot of these, we would call alumni services, supports continuing education, financial literacy, opening up individual development accounts so people can save for their first assets, to break the cycle of poverty permanently, continuing education, health and wellness supports. These are all things that we believe our folks need.
Thank you. Member Grande.
I have a follow-up question then. Does that mean that none of these could be done with the existing foundation?
It does not mean that we cannot continue to work through the California Community College Foundation. I am trying to say that I think it would be more effective and more efficient for us to have our own auxiliary foundation. People were clear, trustees were clear last time we discussed this, that we weren't ready for an independent private foundation, but the majority of community colleges have auxiliaries. And I thought it was, most trustees thought that that was a fine route to pursue.
Most trustees on the executive committee?
Yes, and I got that impression from other trustees who were not, who did not vote and were not on the executive committee.
Member Perry.
I don't want to take up too much of our time in this, get too much deeper into the weeds, but again, I think clearly the college needs a foundation. But I do think there is something to be said for taking advantages of the longstanding and very deep relationships that the Foundation for Community Colleges have with a huge group of funders and I think a 90% grant success rate, which is almost unheard of. So their assistance in identifying those dollars and briefly housing them for you, and I also feel it's contingent on me because, you know, I'm obviously on the board of that foundation. If there are issues with the deliverables on the foundation side, I hope you'll address that with them because certainly given their longstanding history, that has never, to the best of my knowledge, been the case. Sometimes it's cumbersome having a pass-through, without a doubt. That can add a level of bureaucracy that can protract a process that can be frustrating. But I do think that their reputation in the field would support that they are as efficient and forthright and have as much integrity as you could ever want. Again, I appreciate that it could take longer because you have the added piece, but I do want to weigh that against their ability to do a lot of warm introductions to funders that they've had a long experience with, that a warm introduction will help the college since it's an entirely new entity in formation.
What I will point out is that each time there is a relationship established with the foundation, because we're so much in the weeds and doing the work, that we actually have to write the proposals and communicate with the foundations. I've been invited to the Irvine Family Foundation to present at their annual conference this year. When I ran SF Works, I raised $10 million a year back in the late 1990s around workforce development, and have worked with all the California, but all the private foundations around workforce development and economic development, and a lot in education over the past couple decades. I had a business working with, I worked with over 100 community foundations as well as private foundations. I do feel that I, under my leadership, that we would hire the right proposal writers and would have the right processes to manage our philanthropic dollars efficiently and effectively. And this is not going to happen in a month. We really would have lots of time to get air and input, concerns, learn about what works for learners, what doesn't, while building these relationships with the foundations ourselves, which is what we're going to have to do in the end ourselves anyway.
Member Aguinaldo.
I just wanted to align myself with Member Perry's comments. I wholeheartedly agree that you need a foundation. I'm playing devil's advocate in my head right now, as I'm sure a lot of other people are, because I also do think that your partnership with the foundation will help CalBright benefit from institutional knowledge that the system has. And I think that is one of the most valuable assets that an existing foundation can share with us. So to the extent that they could be a resource on the institutional knowledge portion, I think we should, we should consider that. But I'm always welcome to your thoughts on how that would truly affect the outcome.
Member Rawlings.
Hearing the comments particularly around the Foundation for California Community Colleges, I think there's a lot of value in that. I take a slightly varied approach to it, which is that I don't think it's an either-or. I think that we can begin the process of hurry up and wait in getting the foundation set up at the same time that we're taking advantage of the deep relationships that the Foundation for California Community Colleges have, and that we can get some of those warm introductions so that as we get to a point where we're comfortable with bringing the CalBright Foundation fully online, that there will be the opportunity to have a lot of those lessons learned. And I think if we, if we wait until the relationship with one is kind of worn out its welcome maybe, or whatever, however you might say it, but if you wait so long, you're not taking advantage of the time for them to work together. I think it would be great to have the two foundations be able to work and grow together.
I will say, we work closely with people at the foundation every single day, and we have been since the day I started, which was February 19th. Everybody on the team is working closely with the foundation. Nick, our CFO, we have meetings with Julian, the CFO of the foundation, every week right now, and you're housed, he's based with them. So we are working with them every day. This is not new information. I will also tell you that having just left the Gates Foundation for two years, Lumina and all the other big foundations that fund this space, I have relationships with most of those big funders already. And to my knowledge, there isn't any foundation that has made a grant to us thus far, but I don't know and we don't have ongoing communications with right now.
Justy Salazar.
And I think I want to build on Bill's comment a little bit, and I think my concern is more coming from a capacity issue. I don't disagree that this is something that fundamentally is needed long-term. I just worry that there are a lot of competing priorities. And I think at some point, we have to make some very mindful decisions around what's mission, what's a nice to have and what's a need to have and what's mission critical. And I think while not optimal, I think working within the California Community Colleges Foundation, at least in the short term, makes sense, and then building towards a long-term solution. Similarly, my organization works very closely with a lot of the foundations, and I would hope that being a fiscal sponsee of the foundation is not a detriment to future funding. I don't disagree that it may provide a greater amount of autonomy if you have your own, or if the college has its own auxiliary foundation. I just, in the grand scheme of things, this to me is a tier-two, at least in the short run. And when I say short run, next three to six months, this is a tier-two and not a tier-one priority. That's just...
Member Zaragoza.
I guess I just have a question for, like, to that as well, is like, you know, what is your definition of short-term and long-term to, I mean, all the board members? Because if this is going to take a while to set up, would that time in between be enough time for your definition of short-term, or would it be not long enough for the new foundation to be set up?
It takes six months. Is that long enough or no?
Yeah.
Any other board comments? We have a public comment.
I just want to respond to Justy Zaragoza's point. I agree with Justy Salazar, which is I think, you know, we're building the plane as we fly it. We say that frequently, and at a certain point, there's a scarcity of resources, and we have to be mindful about how we're investing them. We still have tech stack, we still have students to enroll, we still have a beta cohort to get through. So in my mind, I'd like to see some of that work further progressed. Justy Perry mentioned six months, that seems reasonable. I don't know if there are other dates that people have in mind, but it's really about an allocation of the resources that we have available at this juncture. So six months seemed reasonable, but I don't know that there's any magic to it for me.
Okay, we have one public comment. Mr. Stanskus. lurking in the doorway. You're in good shape if you're thirsty.
President Epstein, Vice President Haynes, CEO Heils. I am John Stanskus. I am the president of the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges. And until such a time as you have tenured faculty of your own able to organize themselves, it is my duty to act as the faculty voice for you. I know there are new board members. Part of my role is to provide advice to a board. You all are the decision-makers. You all have to vote and decide what you want to do. But I feel like, in particular, it's important for me to give you a little update of what's been happening, and I have some advice about this that you can do with as you like. Since the last time your board meeting in July, where I urged you to seek clarity about the mission of the institution, we have written to the legislature, you all should have received copies of that, really asking for the legislature to clarify their intent because the language is not clear and seems to actually conflict with itself and makes it difficult for us to advise you in two areas. The first is about the expectation of accreditation, whether regional or national accreditation is expected by the legislature, and the expectation about duplication and what exactly the legislature meant about that. The explanation of that to the field and figuring out how to serve students well seems the purview of the legislature, and I had urged you all to seek the same clarity from the legislature. While I recognize that any board of trustees could ask the board of governors to clarify issues for them, I cannot recommend that to this board. Because there are lots of people who work in this, who are very invested in the success of our students who are watching, and I think it would look bad. So that leaves the legislature to act, and if you had recommendations that you wanted the legislature to make a determination, I think you have the capacity to inform them of that, or some other branch of government could do so. With respect to this particular item, I understand in the long-term health of an organization, a foundation is really important. In the short term, it seems like the focus should be really on how are we going to serve cohort one? to serve cohort one? When are we going to get legisla, when are we going to get an answer about the purpose, mission, and scope that is clear about this? And the list of things that are listed, financial literacy, mental health services, research and development, are the things that colleges do without utilizing auxiliary funding now? That is part of what it is in the California Community Colleges. And so I don't think, and, and supporting a student government is actually required. It doesn't require an auxiliary foundation to do so. So I would suggest focusing on the clarification of the mission first and serving students first. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, no more board comments. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to introduce her motion, member Costa's motion, a second time, that we defer this agenda item.
Second.
Could you be more specific? Is there a specific time or just to the future?
How about six months? That was initially suggested, that we defer this until a minimum of March 2020, possibly April 2020, and bring it back.
March would be a full, so we would bring this item?
Yes, bring this item back to the full.
This specific item.
This agenda item to the full Board of Trustees of Calbright.
Okay, in March.
Is it a March meeting? If it's a March meeting, then March.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. What are you, why are you giving this? Okay, okay, so please call the roll and the motion on the floor.
Hilda Guard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Carrillo.
Abstain.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Julina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
No.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Alexis Zaragoza.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. So now we're going to go back to the action items about earlier in the agenda, item 4.2, RFP, Customer Relationship Management. And we have our newest executive here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Hiles, Board President Epstein, and Board Vice President Haynes. My name's Nick Schweitzer. I'm the new Chief Financial and Administrative Officer for Calbright. My first item for you today is a couple of contracts, one for, with Cloud for Good and with Salesforce for a customer relationship management system in order to track learners and their outcomes. The total cost of these contracts is not to exceed $250,000. The majority of that cost is for Cloud for Good, which is about $200,000, and Salesforce for up to an additional $50,000. The purpose of these, these contracts is that, you know, the Calbright needs a, a system in, in order to support the enrollment of our learners, support creating digital learner profiles, to create actionable personal development plans for our learners, and also to, to connect end-to-end data to better understand how our communications and service delivery are impacting the outcomes for our learners, how, how we are ensuring that we're achieving positive outcomes for our learners and continuously improving on, on our, on our delivery of, of instruction and services to them. So Salesforce is one of the world's leading CRM providers. It's a customer relation management system. They have a dedicated team that delivers technology to educational institutions. Cloud for Good is their partner that's focused exclusively on configuring Salesforce for higher education institutions. And together, their proposal included supporting the recruit, as I mentioned, supporting recruitment, supporting educational plans, and student data tracking. So we would recommend your approval of this contract and would be happy to answer any questions.
Member Costa first.
For this item and the two following, in the background, it's noted that basically these opportunities, 187 firms were notified. Is that for each individual RFP, or is that across the whole kind of ecosphere?
Right. So, so, so we, earlier this year, we put out a RFP. They included all the essential components of our service delivery program from, you know, recruitment on through coaching, or not coaching, but tutoring and other things like that. And we invited different vendors to respond to all or parts of, of that RFP. Salesforce and Cloud for Good responded to certainly the CRM and a number of other components. And so we, we, you know, we, we did a scoring rubric where we looked at, you know, all the vendors that responded to, you know, particular components, and we looked at, so we looked at their, you know, we scored them based on qualifications, their, you know, strategy to, to target our, our unique adult learners, certainly cost, level of service provided, and, you know, references and examples of, of successful implementation. So, so we scored, we scored all the responsive vendors, and then based on our scoring, we picked the, the best, you know, the, the vendor most able to deliver what we needed for the, for the, you know, at the lowest cost.
And I think to trustee Costa's other part of the question, when it says 187 vendors were sent the RFP, it's per the specific RFP, I believe.
Okay, member Grande.
When you said that there was scoring, I noticed that it says the subject matter teams review of the proposal. Would you mind providing a little bit of information regarding the composition of the subject matter team?
Yeah, so I don't have the, you know, maybe President Hiles could probably tell you the specific, specific members, but we certainly had the Calbright employees from the executive team that were, you know, directly responsible for that, that functional area to, you know, score, score the, score all the, the vendors along with our consultant that's managing our RFP process. I believe for this one, our, our Chief Technology Officer was involved, probably our, our COO as well, but I, I need to get back to you on the specific members of, and, and each, you know, each, each subject area was, was evaluated by whoever on our team, you know, has the most knowledge and expertise in that area.
Okay, member Salazar.
I think my question more is along the lines of, is this one-time cost, or you, do you anticipate any ongoing costs based on licenses that would be required to continue the, the existing platforms? What is both the, the development cost and then the long-term ongoing?
Right. So this is, this is a culmination. So the, the one-time costs are mainly for the, the setup with, with Cloud for Good. The ongoing cost could be, you know, would be the, the licenses with the, the service contract with Salesforce, although, you know, you know, we're not committing to any long-term arrangement with them right now. So that will give us the option that if we want to, you know, build this in-house at a later point in time, or go with another service provider, we, we would be able to do that.
And there are no ongoing costs for Cloud for Good for licenses?
No, there are no ongoing costs with Cloud for Good.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Costa Rawlings. Okay, please call the roll.
Hilda Guard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Carrillo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Julina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Alexis Zaragoza.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Next up, item 4.3, Learner Market Research Contract.
Thank you. So our, our next contract is with Lieberman Research Worldwide for the purposes of conducting and analyzing and distilling primary research on our, working, on working adult learners statewide. Current year fiscal impact not to exceed, or, sorry, fiscal impact not to exceed $300,000. So Calbright needs to, needs comprehensive statewide market research to gather data on, on our learner population so that we can communicate and, and bring them into our, our programs and, and serve them, best serve them. LRW has over 45 years of experience in market research consulting, including experience with both federal and state clients. They led expansive regional research program for the LA, the 19 LA-area community colleges in, in the joint programs that they are starting up, as well as a, a separate project for Santa Monica College. They've got experience recruiting and designing research for a variety of potential community college audiences, particularly our own, and including, you know, current students, LAP students, and students that are in need of, of skill building. So we would recommend approval of this contract and welcome any questions.
Trustee Aguinaldo.
Can you give me an idea of what kind of work product we can expect from this company, and also what kind of data you anticipate collecting, both in terms of prospective students, these stranded and abandoned workers, as well as data collection from our, our learners that we expect to have in our system? Because there's an utmost importance in getting the right amount of data starting from day one. So can you please give us some contacts, context on the kind of discussions you've had as to what kind of data you're anticipating on needing and collecting?
So the scope of work includes, they're, they're going to interview over 1,500 different individuals, and of course, they'll have a, a methodology to, you know, have a statistically representative sample of, of potential learners in that. But from those, those main, those interviews will be the, the, the main source of data in which they will produce a report for us with, with recommendations.
Nick, may I jump in also?
Sure.
Thank you. We first met, actually, this group because they had been commissioned by the, a consortia of the 19 LA community colleges, as led by Santa Monica Community College, to do surveying work of potential community college students and what they needed. And we got to sit in a whole day where they broke out, they had two different scenarios, psychographic, so meaning not demographic information, but what are the mindsets of different people who would need some kind of training or education? And there was so much energy around workforce connection, connectivity to work and jobs and that kind of training, that Santa Monica and LRW said, listen, we have this baseline data. They had a sample size of something like 2,000 people, that they surveyed mostly in malls, I believe, exactly our target market. So they already have foundational information about what people are seeking, but we wanted to get more coverage throughout different regions because we think that there's diversity outside of the LA district about what the needs are, say in Fresno, Stockton, Inland Empire, other places, in addition to what they found in LA. And so it's a, a bit of an extension of the work that they've already done. But we did send the, the RFP out to a wide variety of different market research firms just to see if somebody else had a different process. But we've seen their work, and it seems to be super in touch with what people actually need, and so we're trying to build on that.
Member, trustee Salazar.
And I just want to, I think I need just a little deeper level of understanding. Is it to inform outreach strategies? Is it to inform, I, I get the psychographic information, I'm just trying to understand how the information will be used.
It is to service outreach and also needs, anticipate the needs of people in different regions in the state of California, just because they're so diverse. And we are doing our outreach, but we're kind of just beholden to whoever comes to us right now. We wanted to have a better strategy for future outreach and services.
Mark Carrillo.
Where, so it says Lieber, Lieberman Research Worldwide. Where they exactly are they based? Do they have a, like, a California-based team?
They're in LA.
Oh, they're in LA, okay. And then have they worked with, beyond kind of the LA project that Santa Monica led? Do we know if they've done other work with other community colleges or educational systems?
They seem to have expertise in education with the folks that were in the room who were doing that work. I don't know of other community colleges necessarily. I believe they said they had, but I really don't know.
So they, so I, they, they've worked with the, the 19 LA-area community colleges on doing market research for them, and also Santa Monica College.
Trustee Costa.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something into the record, and then I have a request through the President for these types of agenda items that I'd like to, to provide some feedback on, which is, the total contract is not to exceed $300,000, but the contract terms cover three years, but the total fiscal amount is $300,000. Because I think when we say current fiscal year impact not to exceed $300,000, it's not quite clear. And so my request for staff would be to review the contract portion of our Board of Governor agenda items, because, A, they get to trustee Aguinaldo's point, which is, it's really helpful if we know really what is the measure of the contract at the end. So in this case, like, how many people are going to be contacted? What is the work product that we are expecting to get out of the contract? And then for the fiscal impact, especially for multi-year contracts, I think we should have a provision that states, you know, not just the current year fiscal impact, but the total duration of the contract fiscal impact, just for clarity.
And Nick, because it's not there, would you please clarify the term?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so the, the total cost of the contract is not to exceed $300,000. We, well, it will be a, likely a multi-year contract. We expect that the work won't take, most likely will not take more than a year.
Okay, any, Vice President Haynes.
So I would, I would concur with member Costa about being very clear about what the total contract is versus a yearly contract, and the, the verbiage is important. So I had no idea it was for a single year or any of the other extenuating issues that would attend themselves to the contract. I would also state that for, for the purposes of background, and I would say this to, to our President, but also to staff, it is this, there was a missed opportunity to be much more broader in background. I would rather more information than less. This is a learning experience for many of our board members to, and I'm, I'm not speaking of just new board members. We need to know, the, all the questions that were asked right here today could have been in a background description. It should be that full, even if it means adding an addendum or an attachment that allows us to read as fully as we need to read. And then it would help us, one, understand, but then also come with auxiliary questions that would, that, that could be clarified relative to what the background is. I felt that the, all of the, the summaries were, just didn't have nearly enough information. And we shouldn't be using this time to, to be asking about background. We should be, should be using this time to be asking about all of these other broader issues relative to, to the, the contract itself.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Costa Rawlings, I think that's.
Two in a row.
That's two in a row.
We're on a roll.
The duet. Okay, please call the roll.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Felicia Carrillo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Julina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer L. Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Alexis Saragosa.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. On to 4.4, the RFP for online tutoring.
So, the next item I have for you is our contract with Link Systems to provide online tutoring supports adapted to our learners. Fiscal impact not to exceed $150,000. So, in addition to creating our job-specific competency content, our learners are going to require access to personalized learning supports in order to ensure they have access to this content. So, that would include both, you know, supports with both foundational skills, such as reading, writing, math, plus supports around our pathway programs, or directly linked to our pathway programs. Link Systems has partnered with over 100 colleges in the California Community Colleges System, and its online tutoring, Net Tutor services include 24/7, 365 days live tutoring, so every day of the year, question drop-off, paper, essay review, and other similar tutoring services. So, we'd recommend approval, and we'll take questions.
Trustee Rawlings.
So, I'm familiar with Net Tutor, and I know a lot of colleges use it, my own does as well. But in the colleges currently, it's generally a supplemental, and I was wondering if that was the same intent here, because I know that our population will have specific needs that Net Tutor may not be the best suited for, but will have coaches and tutors that can work kind of in sync. And so, I wanted to see if I was correct in that assumption.
That is absolutely correct, trustee Rawlings. This is, we need to be able to scaffold and meet people with whatever kinds of supports that they need. So, if there are math-related competencies that are tied to a job, we need to buttress those and make the services available so that they can complete the competencies tied to the job. We want to make sure that all the supports are there, having something that's online, live tutoring, and online related to that kind of more academic support. We want to make sure that it's there and available to folks, not meant to be a replacement for job coaches, the other kinds of things that we discussed around the success division, which we still do need to make offerings around and provide to people, the human side as well.
Thanks.
I have a similar question. On the tutors that we're going to be hiring internally, are they going to be considered faculty positions?
Potentially. We think that they should be. We'll be speaking with the Academic Senate more about how we can, what rules there are and guidelines around what constitutes faculty.
Well, that's got, remember Perigo's hand up in the air.
Well, I did have a question about that. I was kind of trying to formulate it when you asked yours. But, yeah, I see in the background, it says that subject matter teams, that this was evaluated by subject matter teams. But it's a three-year contract, and generally speaking, classroom faculty work very hand-in-hand with the tutoring faculty and the tutors on campus to ensure that there's a good relationship. And I do know of a number of colleges that use Net Tutor, but generally, it's like after hours if a student needed a two or at three in the morning, yeah, not during like basically business hours. And although I know that, you know, you're working in a virtual capacity, I do have a little bit of concern. I mean, I could maybe understand in the initial phase of getting a cohort up and running that this might be a good way to ensure that there's tutoring services. I'm a little more concerned about a three-year contract, once you have your faculty established and may want to work more internally on tutoring services. So, I just was wondering if you could kind of clarify the subject matter, kind of how this came about, that you made this decision, and why you're looking at a three-year contract.
I would like to invite our Chief Learning Officer, Audrey Heinsohn, to come and speak to this issue. And Ari, our CTO, you might want to just come on down, just in case.
One thing.
But our plan was to make different kinds of supports to people available in different ways, because we all respond to different modalities. So, what we don't want is somebody who's trying to master our content alone at two in the morning, feeling like they're left out there. So, we really are not trying to substitute human beings, but just scaffold and provide many different forms of support.
I think, I guess that's partially what I'm asking, is this supplemental to stuff your staff will do, or is this going to be your tutoring exclusively?
No, no, no.
Okay.
This is, yeah.
I'll just clarify one thing. So, in terms of this contract or services agreement, we will be paying for the services as they're being used. So, if we provide more services with our own staff, then we pay Net Tutor less, is the way it works.
Audrey, would you like to speak to that a little bit?
Sure.
Subject matter, you're experts.
Yes. First of all, good afternoon, President Epstein, and Vice President Haynes, and CEO Heils, members of the board. So, Net Tutor is a supplemental support system, and it is as part of the 24/7 support that we're looking to provide our learners. It is an hourly contract, if you will. We will have instructional staff that are the, that will provide the field expertise. So, that is, you're correct, that we will have this instructional staff, the faculty, that will be really driving the learning of our students, of our learners. But at the same time, we have the Net Tutoring as a supplemental support.
And when you say supplemental, do you mean that they're going to have access to their instructor, but then they're also going to have the tutoring, so the Net Tutoring? And my question is, is there going to be on-staff tutors, and this is just a 3:00 AM supplement, or is that your tutoring exclusively?
I think that is still to be decided by our faculty. I would like to have them decide that. So, as we're building out our, I'm assuming that that is how it's done.
Generally, yeah, that's why I'm asking, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So, I would, most likely, but I would let them decide that.
Yeah, because an outside organization can supplement, but isn't necessarily going to be entrenched in what your plans are and what you're trying to do, or your faculty will. And so, sometimes being able to have help with your math at 3:00 AM is important, but kind of knowing the broader context of the course is going to be more internal. So, I just wanted clarification on that.
Absolutely. I think that's an excellent point, yep.
Trustee Rawlings.
Okay. So, this is an area in kind of by bailiwick at my college here. So, I want to make sure that I've got a clear understanding about what we're looking at. The faculty have a very specific role in providing those supports, especially through office hours, and having that time, I think, is invaluable. And so, I want to make sure that we're using our faculty appropriately. But at the same time, Net Tutor is going to fill a layer, and it's going to be a layer that is really kind of like a safety net to keep anyone from falling through a safety net, right? I mean, it's really the role that Net Tutor would play. There could be some things that they're going to be able to do on a little more advanced level. I don't know that they're going to be at a scale that we're talking about a little bit, right? So, I want to make sure that we're using them effectively as well. But there's a middle gap there, that I was trying to get to earlier, about the role of the CalBright employed tutors. And those are typically classified employees that are highly qualified, that work in collaboration with, and oftentimes under the guidance of the faculty, to make sure that where students have specific skill gaps, and that their professors are not always available, that we're able to use them as that next layer, right? So, ideally, a student is getting all the quality instruction through their interaction with their faculty member, where they aren't available to get that, they fall back to the classified supports. And where that isn't available, then we would fall back to Net Tutor, is typically how I would see it. And I just want to make sure that we have that in mind, or if there's something different, that we're really clear about what we're trying to create.
Well, I can answer to that. I mean, that is correct. We are thinking in that way. And even further, we will have our success, our coaches, our success coaches, our learner advocates. So, it is a multi-layered support system, yeah.
Trustee Grande.
Thank you. You had made a comment about being billed hourly for the actual tutoring services. So, is this considered a retainer? And then we also get a separate bill for how many hours of tutoring has been used? And if so, how many hours did we anticipate paying?
Sorry, or, sorry?
So, yeah, I have my laptop over there with the estimate on the number of hours, but I believe that they provided us with an hourly rate, but they prorate it per minute. And so, we're only going to be billed for exactly what our students are using. And we made, do you have the estimate? Oh, we do have the estimate. So, we did some--
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Sure, sorry.
So, yeah, so 624, 25 hours for the first year is--
I'm sorry, just a clarification. So, that would be, there would be an hourly rate for those 625, and then this number here is the, kind of to retain their services? Is that the question? Because I'm not sure.
That's the maximum that we would, that we would, that we would spend on this contract agreement, right?
I see in totality with the hourly rate.
Right. So, it could be far less, but we, you know, we're seeking authorization to go up to this level from the board today.
So, it's not a retainer, I mean, it's just basically a dollar amount that you're taking money out of the account for every time you use them, right? I mean, it's not like, you're not just paying them just to be available.
That's right. That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Trustee Hildegard. I mean, trustee Aguinaldo.
That was true. Everyone knew who you were talking about. So, I'm hearing questions about capacity and utilization, whether a Net Tutor has the ability to meet our needs, and then utilization because we just don't know how it fits into our larger system with exactitude yet. Given that this is a three-year contract, what do we do if we end up deciding that this isn't the appropriate vendor for, on either one of those grounds? What if we say, "We're just going to make our own"? Because neither of these fit. Are we beholden to paying three years for $150,000? How does that work?
No, essentially, we stop using their services. We, you know, we tell them we no longer want to, you know, you know, it'll be, the way we'll pay is we'll use it, and they'll invoice us for it. If we stop using it, then, you know, we'll stop paying.
Okay.
So, part of the appeal, part of the appeal was, this is something that can start on October 1st, when our students start, and we can ramp it up as we need, and we can stop it when we need.
Yes, trustee Salazar.
So, then, does it require in the contract that it say that the contract be on an annual renewal? Because once you commit to a three-year contract, aren't you on lock for that time period? So, wouldn't an annual renewal make sense, and then the college has latitude in terms of whether or not it can both decipher what the consumption rate is and what the resources committed to it?
All right. So, the contract language will have that flexibility in it, that, you know, once we, if we stop using the services, we're not required to use an hour of their service, you know, for any length of time under the agreement.
Trustee Costa.
I just want to offer some clarification. I think what staff is saying is they've projected an appropriation amount based on some sort of projection you've come up with utilization. But the contract is charged back on actuals. So, to the degree that it isn't utilized, there is no charge to the college.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, do we have a motion?
We'll move to approve.
Rawlings and Aguinaldo.
Or Hildegard.
Or Hildegard. Our notorious HBA. Okay, please call the roll.
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Felicia Carrillo. Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Julina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Alexis Saragosa.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. On to 4.5, learner device provisioning.
All right, thank you. So, we are requesting to establish a technology lending library for our CalBright learners, current year fiscal impact not to exceed $624,605. So, our CalBright learners need computers and broadband access in order to access our competency learning programs. You know, we expect that many of our learners will not have access to computers or mobile internet access. As a result, we need to provide, you know, a solution for those learners to provide the access. And then, so we're going to create a technology lending library to provide hardware and broadband access to our beta cohort learners. So, the way that this would work is that when we bring the learners into the program, when our concierge first engages them, you know, we find out whether they have their own computer and access. If they don't have one or both of those, then we will loan them a computer, a Chromebook, along with a mobile access device if they need that, and a data plan, with a data plan along with it, so they can access the services. The Chromebooks and the mobile access devices will remain property of the college. We're currently working on, with legal counsel, to develop an acceptable use agreement, and a loan agreement that says that once they either discontinue in our program or complete our program, they are required to return the devices. Then, we're also looking at giving them the ability, if they complete our program, to purchase the devices as well. So, we have leveraged contracts, system-wide community, system-wide community college contracts with CDW and Verizon to provide these Chromebooks and the MiFi, or the hotspot devices, along with the cellular data plans and associated software to create this lending library. And we were able to get a pretty, a pretty good deal from these providers, about 23% discount from retail. And then, we're going to also have another vendor, Black Dog Graphics, will store the devices, package them, and distribute them to our learners as our learners need them. So, that, we recommend approval of these purchases, and happy to take the questions.
Hey, I think trustee Salazar is first.
I have a two-part question, actually. I think with all of the previous vendors, there was a very explicit delineated explanation of an RFP process and how vendors were selected. And I'm just curious, in this particular instance, there doesn't seem to be one specifically for Verizon and the MiFi device decision. So, that's the first part of the question, and just try to understand the rationale behind it. The second is particularly on the data plan, is that a one-time cost or an ongoing cost? Because I've got to imagine that it will extend beyond an initial startup.
Right. So, the two questions in order. So, CDW and Verizon, we did not do those through a RFP process. As I mentioned, we used a system-wide contract. CDW has committed to match the lowest price, you know, that you can find. CDW has committed to match the lowest price, you know, that you can find. And so we're, so, you know, many community colleges use CDW through this system-wide contract. And they're able to attain lowest price through CDW, through their, their commitment to match lowest price. Verizon, similar thing. The other, the other rationale for, for Verizon was that they, they have the most extensive coverage in, in California. And we want to make sure that all of our learners have access. Of course, you know, any areas where Verizon doesn't cover that, you know, we will look for solutions for those learners. But Verizon has the most comprehensive coverage, so that, so we went with them.
And I'm not as concerned with the CDW, because I think the price point on that is, is satisfactory. I just am more concerned about the Verizon and the data plan associated with it in terms of order of magnitude compared to the other contractors you've brought before us today. It's substantive, so I just want to make sure that for the, in the interest of accountability and transparency, that there is clearly delineated processes on how that selection of that vendor was made.
Yes. So, yeah, we did, we did look at alternative service providers. And it was primarily the Verizon coverage area that is the reason why we went with Verizon. To answer your second question, so the, the service agreement with Verizon, we've built in, and so this is, this is, you know, this cost and, and, and these purchases are, are really just for the, the beta cohort. So right now, we've built in cost for a 12 months of, of, of data coverage through Verizon for, you know, 750 learners. You know, there, you know, we've, we've got an agreement with Verizon, whereas if some of our learners need less time, less, you know, then, then we will be charged, you know, less. So what we're presenting is the maximum cost for 12 months of, of coverage right now.
Trustee Rawlings?
So I'd like to thank you all for some of the work I, I gave President House some, some last-minute homework to get back to me on. This is another area where this is actually something I do regularly in my profession. I would say the prices are absolutely in line with the lowest that I've seen in the state, including the data plan. So I'm really reassured on that. And I also wanted to, to call out the fact that, in addition to just what you're seeing here, it also includes mobile device management. And so we're able to remotely support and secure the devices, so that they don't end up not belonging to the college. It might belong to someone else. We have methods of recovering items that are lost or stolen, or if things are damaged or a student needs support remotely, that there's opportunities to be able to reach out remotely, either from our staff or from a support provider. So this is inclusive of more than just what you see here.
Yes.
And so good work on, on getting a good deal on these things.
Thank you.
I'm not sure who's next. Trustee Aguinaldo?
Two, right. Two questions. One is that when we were initially talking about how the material is going to be delivered to our learners, we were, we discussed the material being accessible through your cellphone, because everybody has cellphones. So could you explain a little bit how you arrived at the Chromebook versus the cellphone? Are we assuming that these learners don't have cellphones? And then the second question is, if I am person number 751, who needs a Chromebook, am I getting a used Chromebook?
So...
And does that, does that matter?
So first of all, Ari's going to speak to the, the device with the specs?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Oh, okay. So, because he's got the most information about that. I also wanted to acknowledge our SVP of Partnerships, who's not here, but did a really great job of negotiating down to get us the discounted devices and pricing that you were acknowledging, as well as, you know, the distribution of the devices and all that management of the process. So I just want to acknowledge that. Sorry, Ari?
So, could you repeat the question? I'll make sure I can, I want to make sure to answer the right question.
Yes, cellphone versus device. Are we assuming that they don't have a cellphone? And then the second question is, what if I'm number 751? Do I get a used Chromebook? Or is this a number that we're going to have to keep paying every couple of years, once we exhaust that, that library?
So ultimately, we do want to provide an experience that learners can do entirely on, you know, phones, mobile devices. I think there was some acknowledgement that for some of the curricula, some of the materials that students would be using, particularly for the medical coding, they're essentially using the digital textbook for parts of it. It's not something that necessarily lends itself to a small screen. So we did want to provide a, a larger screen to work on. So these are, I believe, 11-inch Chromebooks. And so that's for one piece. So I think it is helpful to start with laptops. And we are seeing, and as we're building out our own technologies, we will have mobile devices in mind, in terms of what, what devices we're targeting, we're designing around. In terms of the 751st laptop that we're sending out, these are district property. They're getting returned to us when students complete the program, or when they're no longer in the program. And so we could, we can be reusing these. These are set up in a way that we could detach them from one individual MiFi device and reattach it to another, reassign it from one learner to another. So there's a lot of flexibility there. We haven't worked out the plan exactly on how we'll be doing that. But the number 750 was really designed around the beta cohort, where we're aiming for 350. And so we wanted to make sure that we had more than enough for that. And then similarly, you know, the, the service provider is a service provider that we're using for this beta cohort. And this is obviously something we could revisit later. But that's, the data is also, the plans are set up in such a way that we can turn them on and off over time as we need.
Trustee Costa.
So I have a process concern. It's, you know, without prejudice to the policy, I think it's fine to assume that many of our learners will need technology to support their learning. But we kind of have, as a board, you're asking us to adopt what I call the wimpy model, which is pay for it now and kind of figure out the policy on the back end on Tuesday. And I think that there's a lot of detail that we need to figure out. Like I, for one, I want it to be means-tested. I think, you know, there has to be a financial demonstrated need for the person to be able to get this device. And although we can presuppose that a large percentage of our learners will need that, we don't know. And I think it's an inappropriate use of state funding to not kind of question those things. And so my suggestion would be that we delegate authority maybe to the executive committee or another body to kind of figure out some of these nuts and bolts about how the policy is actually going to work. Because I just think, you know, basically just providing the authority for the expenditure is not sufficient. I think as a board, we need a little bit more oversight in who's getting it, what happens if they don't return it, all those kind of things that are really the nuts and bolts of it.
Trustee Perigo.
Mine plays into that a little bit as well, in that, is, okay, so is my understanding that the, the beta cohort is around 350? Is that correct?
Well, we're actually, we're actually registering, we're intending to register, there's a funnel process, as we discussed earlier. We believe we will touch 10,000 people who will be interested and check out at least the essentials, which is the first section of our training. We anticipate and we hope that we get to register, enroll 1,000 people into the three program pathways of IT, medical coding, and cybersecurity. And we're, again, trying to kind of under-promise and over-deliver. We hope that we graduate all 1,000 folks. But we were guesstimating if we enrolled 1,000 people, that 750 roughly might actually need devices. Honestly, it may be all 1,000 people if they're all working poor and don't have consistent Wi-Fi and don't have a decent device to do the work on. So that would be something where we'd even come back and say, hey, we need 250 more. But upon completion, we were, we wanted to explore with you all the opportunity, if people complete the program, are unemployed, and would like to purchase the existing equipment from us, whether we could do that. I completely agree with Trustee Costa, that there are a lot of specifics and details. We were in a mad dash to make sure that we had this figured out and, and were, could acquire and start provisioning and tagging, tagging all the equipment prior to people starting on October 1st. We want to make sure everything's in place before we need it.
Yeah.
And so, but I, I wonder if there's a way where we could get agreement that we had permission to start acquiring the process, the equipment and the, and enter into the contracts and work with the executive committee even on specific policies. I think Trustee Rawlings is kind of volunteering to help with this. And that we could maybe then have that voted upon at the executive committee meeting. But I'm sorry.
No, no, it's fine. You are answering. I mean, I, I don't know how long the beta cohort is going to kind of be in play and when the next students would come in. And I just feel like, because we're being asked to look at this for a fiscal year, it sounds like you may have a greater need than the 750. And I just don't want to sign off on 750 if it ends up being 1,750. And so I am very comfortable with this idea of it going to exact a little bit more massaging to make sure that you've been authorized to do what you need to do to serve your students here, I guess is my concern.
And we, we want to test out the devices. We want to test out the coverage. We're entering into conversations with other Wi-Fi providers where we might get even better, longer-term deals. So we want to use this as much as, everything we're doing with the beta cohort, unfortunately or fortunately, is testing what works and what doesn't, before we would come back and say, hey, we want to do this for every single new student or make it available. So this is, this is all a test case for us, quite, quite honestly.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you're authorizing enough for what you need.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Vice President Haynes.
So I guess I, I guess I have a slightly different take. So I guess first and foremost, we, we want to make certain that our learners have the technological equipment to be successful. So I want to put that up first. However, what Steph has just said is that we're doing this for the beta cohort. And in the last eight months, we've talked about a beta cohort that was between 300 and 400. And I know we're talking today about something that's different. The purchase was almost double that, the, the number that we have been given over the last several months, which is about 300, 350, 400. Now, the request is for 750, and then we're looking, and then I hear a number of 1,000. So I have, I kind of have a problem with the number changing. And I recognize we're in this, this unknown. But we, we, and some things we need to sort of deal with the known, to the best extent we can. So if this is, if this is not the number, then, you know, I have, I have a problem supporting it.
Can I tag on to that comment? If we, we buy 750 and we only use 200, that, does that mean 550 are sitting on the shelves? Which means that the next time around, somebody is getting a Chromebook that may be technologically obsolete?
I don't believe, we're going to be signing up new students starting in January, so I don't believe the technology would be obsolete. I've been enjoying my MacBook with all the capabilities for a couple of years. I think we would be solid from that perspective. We don't turn on the Wi-Fi and start clocking, that clock doesn't start until somebody's actually using the MiFi device. So I don't think that obsolescence is the challenge around the devices. I don't think that's a risk.
Was your question answered?
What's the number, though? I mean, so we've heard, we've, is it 300 or is it what you've just said, which is 1,000? I'm not talking about the number here. I'm talking about, talking about a beta cohort that we're, we are, we're buying product and supplemental equipment for. That number was, I, I've never heard the number 1,000. I have heard the number 300, 300. I've heard 400. So I get that number. But then the procurement is for 750. So for me, I'm dealing with three different numbers. And I, and I don't, and, and I, I guess I believe in, in a, a system of supply and demand. That is what the, that's what the, the business sector does. It's a supply and demand. It's not like we couldn't get these, you know, three weeks from now relative to a contract. So I'm sort of looking at that. I understand that we're only dealing with $192,000. So it's not really about the money. It really is about to what extent we are servicing what we need to service. There may be some overage, but I don't see it as, you know, 300.
So, excuse me, Vice President Haynes. I think, I, I was trying to describe it earlier. We're all in new territory and we're doing our very, very best. What I can tell you is that if we did come across an extra, let's say we planned for all 350 people and we came across an extra 100 people who needed devices, it would not be in a couple of weeks that we could then issue new devices, because that's not how long it takes to get things approved in this process. So what we have done is, our plan is to enroll 1,000 people at the beginning of our three pathways. We hope to graduate and complete all three to jobs, all three, all 1,000 people to jobs. But we have, we have this funnel. Yeah, and I'm sorry, we haven't talked about this process. There's a ton of material and plans that we go through every single day. And I'm sorry that this is new information for you, but our estimates were that we intend to enroll 1,000 people in the front end. We estimated that perhaps 750 of those would need devices with Wi-Fi. And we will not provision nor loan out any equipment until we have determined a means test. And we have, they have validated that, and then the equipment will be assigned and allocated and tracked. We don't want to, our worst-case scenario is people need it to start a program and don't have access to it. So we're actually enrolling 1,000, I said into the program pathways. It's actually into the essentials. My team is reminding me. So that's at the beginning of the, at the, beginning of the program, and then they would go into the path, program pathways.
Members Aragosa, is, is anybody, did I miss anybody before that? Okay, Trustee Zaragosa.
I was just wondering, so if a student, let's say, doesn't need a laptop and needs Wi-Fi, or vice versa, would they be able to just get the one?
You could just get the MiFi.
Yeah. And then for the ones that are not used, let's say for the Wi-Fi that is not used, we would just, would we just not pay for that? Will we still have to pay for that? How does that part work?
I'm sorry?
No.
For the Wi-Fi? If the, it doesn't start, yeah, the usage. And you know, I missed, I missed, explained something. Sakari and, and Audrey are keeping me honest. I'm so sorry. Where the 1,000 comes from is, all 1,000 would be in Essentials, 300 in each of the three program pathways.
If you're going to speak, you got to be here.
Sorry. It's 1,000 students going into Essentials, which is the very first part of our program, prior to our program pathways, our three program pathways. We're planning to have 350 students in the three program pathways in total, in total.
By when?
And the, the plan is to, that the laptop, that these devices would be issued upon enrolling in the Essentials program, which is the earlier step. Now, what we don't know is what percentage of the, of the folks would need a laptop, what percentage would need the mobile hotspot. So that piece is unknown.
So by when do you expect to have 1,000 students, 350 in each pathway?
Some, sometime in November. We, we don't want to give you the actual date, because we're still scheduling the precise date when it officially happens, so.
Trustee Salazar.
I don't want to make this assumption, so I just want to be clear on this. Specifically in the line item around licenses, licenses. Specifically in the line item around licenses and support, Chromebooks will likely only work particularly if we have a Microsoft Office Suite on it. Is, is my assumption correct that it includes the Office Suite?
So the Chromebooks have the Google G Suite, which is equivalent, yeah.
Trustee Costa?
Just now that we're deep in the numbers of the cohort, so does that mean that you're assuming 50 drop out of the essentials?
50 out of 1,050.
Yeah.
Trustee Rawlings.
I wanted to clarify something I heard from Audrey versus some of the other conversation is that we're getting, getting 1,000 through the essentials and then getting between 300 and 350 in the three cohorts combined. So it's not 300, 350 each, it's 300 with all of them combined, right?
That is, that is correct. So just to clarify, we're, we're assuming that there will be 1,000 learners who will be interested in going through our essentials program. We are also assuming that of the three programs that we are offering, that 350 learners will be going through those three programs. So in total.
In total.
And this is in total.
And again, it's because even though people have certain aptitudes or, it sounds like an interesting job, once you actually learn the specifics of jobs and, and whether you have the aptitudes, we found that there's a lot more filtering and attrition. People go, oh, I actually would be interested in a different kind of job, cybersecurity, as you define it, doesn't sound interesting to me, et cetera. So that's where the action plans, the advising becomes very important, the understanding of your own aptitudes and assets and interests, all of that happens. It is a filtering process that happens. Before, we would enroll people who are then really deeply invested into being ready for a job.
One other clarification I wanted to make is to make sure we had member Zaragosa's question answered. If I'm correct in, in the way that the Verizon contract might be structured, is that we would be paying for the device and that then we wouldn't be paying for the service plan if the device isn't being used. And so if we had some devices that were used and not used, we can disconnect that, that device from the service contract, but we would still have paid the $18 for the device. Is that correct?
So the, my recollection is the MSRP on the device is about $200. They have a promotion that we pay $0 with the plan. So the $18 is just the tax on that. And the plan, we have the ability to turn it on and off up to a certain number of days during the year. And so we can delay, so we can essentially delay when we turn it on. And if a student stops and we reissue the device, we can turn it off and when we're ready to send it back out, turn it back on.
Trustee Aguanada.
So it sounds like we're almost mixing two different agenda items together, one that's actually on our agenda and one that should be on our agenda at some point. So could we talk about this agenda item and then possibly put on a future agenda, an explanation of this whole numbers breakdown? And if, if we need more information in the interim, we should be able to get all of that information in a way that is, you know, that everybody can put some thought into how it's prepared and presented in advance. Because it sounds like all of our questions are kind of aiming to the same thing, which is kind of a sidebar to what the actual agenda item is. Just a thought.
Vice President Haynes.
All right, so I, I just really do, I may be obtuse. I really do need to understand. So the expectation is that 1,000 adult learners are going to enroll in the essentials piece, that that's a piece. The question, and then, then there is a place where they would, would or would not enroll in one of the three beta programs, okay? So I, okay, so I, I have that piece now. Thank you. When is the, when is the piece of equipment then authorized? Is it authorized in the essential piece and therefore you're covering 750 of them? And then, and they, and they get that equipment, it's shipped to them, whatever it is that they need. So, so it's, and so there's the expectation that fewer will enroll in, not the 1,000, but some, may, maybe lesser number will enroll in one of those three. Am I, am I saying that correctly at this point or not?
Do you want to answer the device question first?
Yeah, so, yes, the, the devices will be provided to them when they enroll in the essentials program because they're going to need the devices and the access to, in order to participate in the essentials program.
Okay. So there is, okay, so I'm, I'm good with that, which means that, that, that number that chooses not to move on, there needs to be a policy and a practice in place for retrieval. Am I correct there too?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so has there been any projections what that might look like or, and if there isn't, is there a way to get some projection what that might look like? I, I'm with, I'm with Hildy that that's a whole nother set, but I need to understand or you to understand, to be sharing that there's these other steps that need to happen in terms of policy and procedure.
Yes, so we, we have been, as I mentioned, we've been working with, with legal counsel in terms of how a, you know, a, a device recovery, you know, what, what the policy, you know, that, or what the, what the agreement that, that we have with our learners in terms of returning the device and then how to actually implement that, you know, whether we send a, a notice out to our, our learners requesting a return of the device and, and something along those lines. So yes, we, we have been thinking that through as, as quickly as we can so that we can be ready for our, our first cohort.
Okay.
So I think you probably think we are drilling 100, $200,000 item to death at late in the afternoon, but I think it does raise all these ancillary questions as, as you saw. And what I'm curious about is your signup experience, the expectations around receiving that Chrome. It's like, how do you put it out there to your potential learners that you're going to get this product, there's going to be means tests? I think it's a little tricky in terms of how you manage their introduction to the system. Is there an expectation that this is part of the process or is it made clear from the outset that there'll be means testing? And, you know, to state the obvious, you have a very short period of time to develop a means testing mechanism.
So we don't have, we didn't, we're not.
I think, I think President Epstein was going to.
No, answer the question.
Yeah, so, so, you know, again, the, we're, we're not contemplating a means testing at, at, you know, at this point in time. It's, it's more of a, you know, an expectation that to the extent our learners have their own devices and internet access, that they, they use their own. But if they don't, then we can loan them these devices as, as only a loan.
So this will be determined at the point in time when, in the same conversation where they're making their ed plan, so immediately prior to enrolling.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say is we're still fleshing all of this out. We would love to work with trustee Rawlings and trustee Perry and anybody else who would like to give us good thoughts about the policies, the mean testing, the processes. That would be incredibly helpful. I think we can't do it probably in this meeting right now. Yeah.
Okay, with that, I think we need to see if there's a motion to approve this, this RFP.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, that's Perigo and Rawlings.
Can I just make a clarifying point?
Yes, you may.
I'd like to be a little bit more precise on the motion. And so I'd like to enter into a substitute motion, which is I'd like to put forward a motion to approve the item as it appears for us in conjunction with delegating authority to the executive committee to work with staff on the policies surrounding the procurement of these items.
I second that.
Okay, so we've got a substitute motion that's been seconded. And every, okay, can we call the roll?
Hilda Cardo Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Felicia Carrillo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Julina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Kim Perigo.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Alexis Zaragosa.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Since a number of us have flights around six or so, we don't have time for any more agenda items today. We do have a public forum obligation and I believe there is at least one person or maybe two. Eric, yeah.
I don't know how to pronounce it.
Eric?
Eric Kelly-Manni, mog, mog, moggy. I'm so sorry, Eric. Come on up.
You'll get it before long.
I'm Eric Kelly-Meggy. I represent the Community College Association. It is the statewide CTA affiliate that deals with 43 of the faculty associations in the state. At the start of this meeting, President Hiles noted that they are on track to enroll students in October. This is commendable, but more track needs to be built and I would argue built soon. As of today, as far as I can tell, there are no full-time faculty hires for Calbright and there's no faculty contract. Now, I've negotiated a number of contracts in my day. I've led a number of negotiating teams. When you have normal situations, this is a three or four-month process that requires about a dozen meetings. Time is short. It often takes multiple months. So I urge you to direct Calbright to begin negotiations with faculty groups as soon as possible. You know, I noted on your item 5.1, there's no faculty salary schedule yet. This is a good thing. It hasn't been negotiated. But there's also multiple working conditions. There's also multiple places where when asked to decide how the balance of authority and the actual workday will exist. I also urge you to begin hiring as soon as possible. You know, you just spent time talking about hardware. Well, those conversations at the other 114 community colleges are normally brought to a shared governance group. We call it president's advisory council at my home college. Your college may call it something different. But the point is they're sent before a group of people that talk out the issues so that in many cases, the questions that you have today have already been answered. Item 6.1, the presentation that you're going to have later, is also another place where we would ordinarily have faculty involvement. No term means what with regards to a work week or a vacation schedule? Self-paced.
30 seconds.
Can mean a wide variety of things. At other community colleges, faculty assess students, instruct them, support them, and evaluate them. And I'm very much expecting Calbright to do the same thing. So Calbright may be a different type of college, but I'm expecting first of all, that the faculty enjoy the levels of autonomy and professional authority that you see elsewhere. And secondly, that you establish shared governance processes with faculty, staff, and students, once you get some, that go ahead and provide the community college focus that's been so successful for us. Thank you.
Thank you. With that.
Can I just ask a, a quick point of clarification? So on an item that we will have at the next board meeting now on 5.1, I think on the original agenda, it said that the, the draft, Calbright's salary schedule would be on there. It's on there as an executive content. I don't know if it meant to be public content, but I'm just bringing that up. So if it comes back and it was meant to be there, that it's on the public content.
It was, it was meant to be in the first reading.
Right, was it, was the Calbright meant to be public or not public yet? If it's not, it's fine. I'm just saying, when it comes back, if it meant to be, you can discuss it.
It will be.
Yeah, I would just let you know that it wasn't there if it, if it meant to be.
Okay. That may be something we take up in the executive committee for the first reading and you'll get a second reading on it here.
Yeah, it just looked like on the agenda that it should have been there as an attachment and it showed up under the executive content. That's my, that's my only point.
And I also wanted to point out, I feel terribly that there are surprises like, oh, 1,000 people will be enrolled in the, in the essentials program. And I realize, you know, I'm just so sorry that we're shorting the informational session about what it means, what our training experiences look like, because I know trustees have been hungry for that content. We're trying to find ways to share a lot of information with you beyond the weekly updates and so I'm still struggling with how to get that information to you all.
Member Rawlings?
Given the, the short headedness we were earlier today, I was wondering if we could take a vote on reconsidering the motion on the senior vice president of learner success at our next meeting? Maybe a motion to reconsider? Or what that process?
Point of information, do we have a quorum?
Is that?
Do we have a quorum?
What'd you say?
Point of information, do we have a quorum?
Yeah, we, we still have a quorum. The, do, I mean, we could, we could vote on that motion. I guess my inclination would be maybe to have some one-on-one conversations with the board members that were concerned and, and if we, and if there's, there's an appetite for taking it back up, we can raise, we can put it on the next agenda rather than to vote now on a reconsideration of something that we voted down, you know, an hour ago. That would be my preference. There's, is there a sense of the board on this?
Okay with that.
You're okay with that? Okay.
Might I ask another question regarding procedure? I think I heard you just mention President Epstein that we might have a first reading of the agenda item regarding salary schedule during the executive committee meeting.
Right.
And then a second reading during the full board of trustees.
Right.
Can, can we do that? Have a first reading in an executive committee meeting and then a second reading of the same item in the full board meeting? Or does it have to be two successive meetings of the same?
I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll check with our attorneys on that. Thank you. Okay.
If I may, President Epstein, I think both issues should probably be raised with counsel regarding our board policies. What is our board policy for granting reconsideration to items as well as around first and second reading? Generally, as a matter of course, the same body has to hear at the first and second time.
I'm sorry, there was a little sidebar.
I was just saying, we need to confer with counsel, I think, on both items because generally as a matter of course, the same body has to hear the item for first and second reading. And then secondarily, on the item being granted reconsideration, we need to know what our board policy is regarding items that are voted and dispensed with and in what circumstances reconsideration is granted.
Yeah, that's why I, I didn't want to do a formal reconsideration. I think, you know, we can always bring anything to the agenda that we want and, and I think it would be complicated to reconsider. But I, I've just been informed that if an item's being put over, we need to take a roll call to vote on that. That's not familiar to me, but if that's what, that's under the Brown Act, that's.
And I believe you have to be specific into what board meeting you're continuing it to.
That's right.
Okay. The, yeah, this is like Board Trustee President 101 here. Okay, so we need a, so we need, do we need a motion to put over both of the items, the first reading? Probably not the information item, right? I wouldn't take that information.
I'm not an expert, but I think it's just.
Yeah, so, so, okay, so, so the question is, do we want to, if, if it has to be in front of the same body twice, which is what I'm hearing, then we got to put it over to the next.
To November.
November meeting. So I need a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, that's Grande and Perigo. Please call the roll.
Hilda Cardo Aguinaldo.
Hilda Cardo Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius, sorry. Felicia Escobar Carrillo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Julina Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kim Parago.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Alma Salazar.
Aye.
Alexis Zaragoza.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all for hanging in there. Eric, I appreciate you sticking around at the very end. And we are adjourned.